The section where we'll take comments from the general public. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the commission at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Raton Water Works, Commissioner Chavez.
The Water Board met on July 18th. Lake Malloy is currently two inches below the spillway and the city is still using only Lake Malloy and we have not pumped from Eagle Nest as of yet. The ACOM Engineering started evaluation tests on the spillway on the 19th. They took core samples all along the spillway and they should have a report of their findings within 30 days. We discussed and approved three financial resolutions, adjustments, the quality report, and the final budget adoption to be presented to the commission this evening. We discussed the upcoming water gross receipts tax due by the end of the year and the water department is losing two veteran employees, Mr. Bacon and Mr. Aragon, retiring in September and they're in the process of training them. And that's the end of the report.
Thank you, sir. Raton Public Service, Commissioner Jacomo.
RPS Public Service Committee Board met on July 28th, 5:30 PM. Financial assistance to go. Information was reviewed by Sandy Chavez, Assistant Manager and Financial Officer and the Board members. The Board reviewed and discussed and approved three resolutions. Resolution 2017-3, which was a budget adjustment request for 2016-2017. Resolution 2017-4, approval of the June 30th, 2017 financial report. Resolution 2017-5, 2017-18 final municipal budget adoption. RPS General Manager Robert Walton gave a report on the pre-commissioning of the Gen Mar generator known to us as known as Unit 4. We did know it as Unit 6, but because of numerous permitting paperwork, it was turned over by the state to be referred to as Unit 4. All testing and different scenarios had gone very well with just a few minor problems which are being worked on. Overheating because of the outside high 90-degree temperature is one problem they're working on, but overall all should be corrected and ready to turn over to the project as completed to RPS in Raton in two to three weeks. That's all I got.
Thank you. Senior Center Board, Commissioner Chavez.
The Senior Center Board met on the 18th, discussed and approved the realignment of the Board of Directors. The new Board of Directors consist of Chairman Jim Zeller, Vice Chairman Butch McGowan, Secretary Tracy Camp. They discussed and approved June financials. They're holding steady despite a five, you correct me if I'm wrong on this, a 5% cut in the state budget that they gave it to them and they're operating, they're holding steady. And then also the COFAX Senior Center incorporated Wagon Mound and Moira into the COFAX County Senior Center. I would like to issue some kudos to Mr. Sagata and his crew. The Senior Center staff have been operating within the budget restraints despite the budget cuts and they're doing a good job down there.
Thank you. That's all I have on that one. Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission, Commissioner Schuster.
The Planning and Zoning Commission met on Thursday, July 20th at 7:00 PM. I was unable to attend, but by the notes they had a quorum present, Randy Madison, Charles Hyde, and Richard Gertler. They approved their minutes from the previous meeting on April 20th. There were no items from citizens present, no business, no new business and no old business. Meeting was adjourned.
And you're still up with the Housing Authority?
That's right. There again, the Housing Authority met on July 18th. I was out of town for that meeting as well. And by the notes I received, there was no significant business, although we have a member from that board present and if she feels that there's anything she should mention?
Nothing, just a statement.
Nothing, okay. So, I forgot to note on planning and zoning, the next meeting will be October 19th, 2016 at 7:00 PM and the next...
2016?
17, sorry. It's a misprint here in the notes. I read it as is. And the next Housing Authority meeting will be the third Tuesday of the month, correct?
All righty, thank you. ETZ Zoning Commission has not met. Laboratory Advisory Board, Commissioner Jacomo.
Library Board meeting was held on Tuesday, July 18th, 5:30 PM. Upstairs meeting room has been painted, a new floor tile installed. Renovations is nearing completion and it looks great. The library is in need of volunteers. Anyone interested, please stop by and talk to Mrs. Wright or Denny Gumm. Statistical report for May 2017, grant circulation total was 4,541 distributed. Money collected, $899.40. Donations was $250. Fines, $120. Copies made, $528.99. Memorials collected was zero. Programs held in the library was 19, attended by 299 persons. Story hour held at the library was four, attended by 23. Statistical report for June 2017, grant circulation total was 4,569. Monies collected, $684.74. Donations was zero. Fines were $209.07. Copies made, $475.67. Memorials was zero. Programs held in the library was 13, attended by 88 persons. Story hours held were three, attended by 124 persons. That's all I got.
Thank you. Financial Advisory Board, Commissioner Chavez.
The Financial Advisory Board met on the 20th and they approved the financials to be presented to the commission tonight. I was not present.
Okay, that's all. That's it. Okay, that concludes our reports. We'll move into the business section of our meeting. Item A, approval of the July 11th, 2017 regular commission meeting minutes. You all have had that in your packet, have a chance to go over them, I'm assuming?
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the minutes. I found last thing written that I could find. I make a motion to approve.
No second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as recorded. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same vote. Item B, Schuler Restoration Annual Report to Commission, Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commission, I think on this item, we had planned on having Schuler Restoration Board present, but I think we would like to do that at a later meeting and so I haven't come in and presented the report, but we couldn't not put that together tonight. So I'd recommend that we postpone that report until a future meeting.
All righty. We don't need a motion to postpone that.
It's just a report.
Yeah, it's just a report.
Billy said he would be present on August 22nd.
August 22nd, okay. Item C, North of I-25 Neighborhood Watch Update Slideshow. I believe we have a group here.
Mayor and Commissioner. We do have representatives of the Neighborhood Watch present and they have a presentation. I'll let Mrs. Brewer boot that up. I think that the Neighborhood Watch has made a real difference in that area north of I-25. We have a very active group. You see quite a few folks here tonight that have been active in that group and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Brewer and...
Thank you.
Report to the commission.
Okay, good evening. So, we've put together a little slideshow of some of the photos that we have. We don't have a lot of before photos because I just didn't think about it prior to some of the cleanup that we did, but we do have some excellent after photos. So I'm just going to show you a few of those and discuss a little bit of what we've done and planned to do in our neighborhood. And I want to say thank you to all of our neighbors because without everybody working together, this never would have happened. And so we have a very, very good neighborhood watch. I encourage everybody in the city, if you have a neighborhood, start a neighborhood watch. It's a great way of meeting people, it's a great way of staying on track on what you've got going on in your neighborhood and making improvements and really being active for the city and being partners with the city. So I thank all of our neighbors in our Neighborhood Watch. We are actually considered north of the I-25 highway that goes across North First Street, so anything north of that highway. And so it includes North First Street above the highway and then goes down Stevens and then it goes all the way out to almost Bartlett Mesa. We have a lot of people that really want to be a part of this neighborhood. So it is a very large neighborhood watch, but we are managing to get it cleaned up and looking good. So I wanted to let you know that these are some of our goals and that is that we want our neighborhood to be safe above all. It should be a safe neighborhood. Everybody in the United States and in our city has the right to a safe environment and we want it to be clean and that's something that we're striving towards right now. We also want it to be friendly. We don't want people to feel that they can't come to our neighborhood, that we can't be friends with our neighbors and so it's a friendly neighborhood as well. We also want to be a partner with the city of Raton. And so we are trying to take care of our neighborhood and we want to work with the city to continue that and maintain it and do what other improvements that we'd like to see. One of the things that we've kind of mentioned and we'll be working towards this in the future is we need a park in our neighborhood because we have parks in other neighborhoods, but we don't have one in our neighborhood. And I understand that there has been some land discussed that is owned by a former Ratonian that might be donated and so we're going to start looking at something like that, but that's just in the future. So I wanted to go on with, one of the things that you'll see is we have a very nice neighborhood. These are just some of the houses that you'll see throughout. This one is on Lincoln. I didn't even show mine because mine doesn't even compare to this house. This is very nice. This is the Yobbs. And then we have Margaret's because it's very nice and neat. As you can see, these are the way they look most of the time and, you know, unless they're actually having somebody come out and do something. This is very neat and trimmed. And then we also have, this is on the corner, this is the Rogers home and so you can't see a lot of it because it's a very large parcel there, but yet it's very neatly trimmed and kept up. And so we consider these people good neighbors. This is a fun one that is right down on North First Street and it's just beautiful with all the flowers that Connie Duncan plants there. I was out there taking pictures and I told her, "I'm going to do a slideshow and I want to include your home," so she was very pleased. But these are the kind of neighbors that we like and want to encourage is to take care of your yards, make it beautiful and something that everybody can enjoy seeing. Then, some of the cleanup that we've done so far. These particular trees are on the corner of Lincoln and Stevens and it's an elderly woman who lives there and the trees had almost died because of the drought that we've been in and she doesn't water her grass. She's from Alabama and she thought that the rainwater would take care of things. So the trees were almost dead and there were a lot of dead branches up there. Well, her husband had passed away and so she was not able to really take care of things. But knowing her, she's actually my neighbor, so I did talk with her and let her know that the neighborhood was concerned. And that's one of the things that we do, we communicate with our neighbors. When we see something that we don't really appreciate or that we'd like to see cleaned up, we do try to talk to them. So we talked with her and she did hire somebody to come and take care of the top, the branches there out of that old cottonwood. So it looks much better. Now you can't see it very much, but there's a little elm tree off to the left there. And I wanted to thank Mr. Walton, wherever did he go? There you go, for volunteering to actually trim out the dead branches there. So we've had neighbors that actually volunteered to help other neighbors too. So thank you, Mr. Walton, for doing that. So that's another one that we are very proud of to show. And this is actually what the city had done and we appreciate that because this was an overgrown, really trashy-looking lot at one time and the city did go in after numerous complaints they received from our neighborhood. And so it did, it got cleaned up. And actually there were pictures of the trash trucks there, you know, cleaning it all up and I didn't get those included, but we are very appreciative of this particular lot getting cleaned up. Now, these are some areas of concern. On that same lot, you couldn't see it from the previous picture, but this is still unsheltered junk that's still on that same lot. And then we also have a house here and as you can see right here, there's an abandoned, broken, I don't know, can you see my pointer on there? I guess not. But right there to the right of the building, to the right of the house, there's a vehicle there with a broken-out windshield. There's tires, there's weeds, there's all kinds of junk. This is just in the front, you can see a lot more towards the back. And that's still an area of concern that we have in our neighborhood. And that's actually on Dwyer, isn't it? It is on Dwyer. That was also the area of the person that we went to court with or about and that person was then arrested on a violation of probation. And so that's an area of concern there because we know that that particular area is a very high drug trafficking area and we kind of cleaned it up when that person went to jail, but now there's someone who has stepped up and is taking their place. So we're going to start again a very definite campaign to clean that house up and get it taken care of. This one, as you can see, it's been cleaned up from what it was, but again, there's tall weeds, there's elm trees growing up like weeds and we're still very concerned about this house. If you go back to Margaret's house, and let me show you the difference because they are right across the street from each other. And so, you know, it really hurts our whole neighborhood when we have those kind of houses. Now compare this to the one that you just saw and they are right across the street from each other. So we're really wanting, and again, the same owner from the house with the broken-out windows and stuff, same owner owns that other house that's in pretty deplorable condition. And so we'll go on here. We also have some trailers there that are being used evidently. Now I understand that there's no ordinance that keeps anybody from maybe using them, but we'd like to check into that ordinance too. I did copy this ordinance, the impounding of abandoned vehicles because we feel that those particular vehicles on that property is abandoned with the broken windshields and it just trashes up the whole neighborhood. And then this is taken directly from the website of ratonnm.gov and right there it says, "Unsheltered junk, abandoned, inoperable vehicles." And so we want to draw your attention to that. That's something that we have a great concern about. This particular house is on the corner of Stevens and Dwyer and as you can see, all the weeds grown up. And I believe the city had to go out and clean up the weeds around the stop sign just so people could see the stop sign itself and be able to see traffic, oncoming traffic. Now we have another picture. This is the vehicle that's sitting there and it has been sitting there for many years actually. And we would like to see that one towed out because according to our ordinance, abandoned, inoperable vehicles. So if you would, we will really be pushing to have that cleaned up because it really is eyesore, it affects our whole neighborhood. That's right on Stevens. Anybody driving through the neighborhood sees that. And so we want to make sure that that is taken care of. So we'll be pushing for that. And then the criminal trespass. This was brought up at the large city Neighborhood Watch meeting that we had down at the convention center about a year ago. And so it was brought up that, you know, you didn't maybe have the right to have someone arrested if they were on your property unless you have a no trespassing sign on it. So I wanted to show you what these people have done. And this is right across the street from that open lot that had the unsheltered junk and the different vehicles, motorhome on it. These are every house along that street and they've done this because they want to be able to protect their property and themselves because they've had some problems with that neighborhood. And this is on Bonita and every single house has posted, "No trespassing, keep out." And that I think is deplorable that we have to do that in order to keep our property safe. And so I just wanted you to see that every single home on that street has posted this. And it makes it look very uninviting, very unfriendly and that's not our goal. We want to be a friendly, inviting neighborhood. So I'd like to let you know that we will be addressing that as well with our Raton Police Department. We do have a very good partnership with the county sheriff's department. When we had difficulties in that area and we would call because we saw the drugs being dealt out of that home, the county sheriff department was there immediately. And I would like to see that happen with our police department as well. As far as I know, have they ever shown up when you've called? The Raton Police, once? Okay. So we would like to really develop that partnership with the Raton Police Department because, you know, they're the ones that will really be taking the bull by the horns and arresting or following the ordinances for the city. So I thank you for the time that you have allowed us to show you what we have done, what we are doing in our neighborhood and what we hope to do in the future. And I encourage anybody who is out there, start your own Neighborhood Watch because it really does make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. We commend you on the job that you've done already and it's quite impressive what a group of people can do when they put their minds together.
It is. And you know, when you work together with each other and with the city and the entire community, it does make a difference. So I encourage everyone to step up and get involved. Thank you.
It also made a difference in the court case.
Yes, it did.
It also made a difference in the court case for the people to show up and the judge found out what he wanted to find out.
Yes, that one person that was arrested for the violation of parole and we were there in force, it was probably about 20 people. And the judge made note of that, realized that we were all there for the same purpose and that was to take care of that person and get him off the streets. And he has been arrested in his, now I believe in the penitentiary, not in just our county jail. So, but now we need to take care of the person who has stepped up and has taken his case. So it'll be a continual battle. But we're up to it, we're not going to give up.
Well, we thank you for your work.
Could I say something?
Sure.
Laura, you're certainly the neighborhood, you know.
Yes.
Like one thing I've noticed, and I lived here as a kid and then was gone for a number of years and I can tell you that. We used to have the Galizios. We had the Rubens and we had the Sonny Bernards plus others that I can't recall right now. And they had a real interest in keeping the town looking good. They worked in the downtown area. If their business was on Second Street or First Street, wherever it was, they took a real interest. We drive down those streets now and I blame the city for this. There's weeds growing up down on South Second, I think it's probably the 300 or 400 block. There's weeds growing up out of the Greenie Kitchen coming up through the grates in there. Three feet. Now who in hell in the city is responsible for that? I have driven by it so many times and I've got to stop. I've got to get in there and cut that damn thing out of there. The people that live there are not taking responsibility for it and I'm not sure if they're responsible. This is out in the street. Now there was a barrel where the old, there was a flower shop there for a while by the filling station. There was an old stage barrel that was there and I blamed myself so many times I passed that and I either was in my car or in a truck and I hurried and I couldn't get it. Finally, some good citizen pulled over there and took that thing in the back of his truck and moved it. But the city never did a damn thing about that and it was there for months. The same thing has happened in our alleys. The city spent thousands of dollars buying these bear-proof dumpsters. Well, great, great. Our city employees come by, they dump those things and if you've ever taken the time as city commissioners to look at it, there's one of the big things that hangs up in the doors and hangs out over, it's a cat litter thing. Stinks like hell, looks like hell. And if you're going to go in there and jerk that thing out, you're damn sure going to get home and wash your hands and your wife will get after you because some way those dumpsters, the top lid flips open and everything spooks come out. Sometimes it doesn't. I was by the one out by the old ARF plant yesterday and I've been so proud of that one since Jason put a sign up there. And that's all it took. There were people hauling in all kinds of branches and everything, dumping there. And Jason finally put a sign up there and said, "People will be prosecuted, they stick to the law if they're caught dumping here." Well, that did a great job for months. Well, I lived by there yesterday or the day before and our own city employees were the problem. They had dumped that thing out, things caught in it, they set it back down on top of some of that smelly crap. Well, I've been told the truck drivers are not to get out of their trucks. Blowning. Where in the hell did that idea come from? They can get out of their truck with their buddy setting, deciding to get out of their truck and dump that thing several times until it's cleaned up. Anything that drops on the ground, they can pick it up and throw it in the back of the truck. We all do that around our own neighborhood. You don't leave this stinking stuff laying around. They put that dumpster, that bear-proof dumpster back down there, it had not clanked that shut. I was able, as an 86-year-old man, I was able to lift the thing up and look down in it. I imagine some of these ladies here could probably learn it too. You couldn't get the door open, you know, because of the hurry, you really got to have a good grip to get that door open. Get a good grip on it and pull it open. But our employees that are being paid to help keep this damn town clean, dump that thing, shake it a little bit, down it goes, they could care less what's hanging out of that thing or what it came down on. That mess, I tried to pull it out from under that thing, it stunk like hell. I don't know what it was, but whatever it was, somebody thrown in there. And then the city dumped it, it did not go in the truck, it went onto the ground and they dropped this right back on it. And I don't know whether it's the union or the supervisors or what, but they drive right off and leave it. And this happens all over town. If you guys ever take the time to cruise our alleys, I checked on a cover you went time and, "No, that wasn't your job." There's things going on in our alleys that you ought to know about. And I don't think you're taking the time to cruise the neighborhood like you probably used to do here. So we're living with instances where people are being paid to do the job, they're not doing it right and then there's nobody calling up on it. And so then we end up in the neighborhood, living with this kind of stuff. Now I live out in the county and I've been told previously by the commission, not this one, "You don't even live in the county, what the hell are you doing here?" Well, it's because it's the town I was raised in, it's the town now that I come in and shop in and such and such. And I'm expecting the people to, we as citizens, to go to the ballot box and vote. I don't because I'm outside of the city, but as a citizen, they are supposed to be the ones that are taking care of this kind of thing. If the people they hired to do the job are not doing the job, why not? They're being paid well. I just asked today for a listing and I got it very quickly and we're paying some job done good salaries to the people who are supposed to be watching over our city, keeping it clean and this kind of thing. I've said enough this time, but next time I'll say more. Thank you.
Comment on any of that?
I'd be happy to address. Mayor Protem, Commission, we welcome all of the public input. We take that into account. We will consider that. I don't think we want to have a debate at a business meeting, but we will certainly accept the input and try to use it in a productive manner.
Thank you. Okay, item D, deliberate and act on an event, Raton Main Street Gate City Music Festival and Street Closures. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protim and Commission, this is a third annual event, the Gate City Music Festival, which is held on Labor Day weekend. I think that we're building an event every year, look forward to getting, improving every year, and bringing people to town at a time when we want to fill motel rooms and restaurants. And so I think this is a, could be a signature event for Raton. And the Raton Main Street has worked hard on improving this event and preparing again for the 2017 season, so they have asked for your consideration and approval of the event. We do close streets over the weekend in the downtown First Street area, and it generally focuses between Cook Avenue, well, Rio Grande to Park Avenue. So the music performances are held there, vendors are set up in that area, and we would do that again over Labor Day weekend. Main Street is a hardworking, very effective group that presents a good plan. They work well with our department heads. We reviewed the event, and we recommend approval of the street closures and the event.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
Make a motion to approve the event, Raton Main Street Gate City Music Festival and Street Closures?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the event, Raton Main Street Gate City Music Festival and Street Closures. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate and act on St. Patrick's, St. Joseph's Annual Fiesta and Street Closures. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protim, Commission, this is a longstanding event in Raton. It has grown into a rather large event. The difference this year is the timeframe has changed on the event, so they are proposing September 29th, 30th, and October 1st, they would conduct a three-day event. Other than that, the event is similar to what we've seen in past years. There are, again, road closures in the area of St. Patrick's, St. Joseph's Catholic Church on Buena Vista, and our staff, again, has reviewed the event. They have provided all the documentation that we've asked for, and we recommend approval of the street closures and the event.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Berry regarding the event?
No, I'll move to approve the St. Patrick's, St. Joseph's Annual Festival and Street Closures.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the event, St. Patrick's, St. Joseph's Annual Fiesta and Street Closures. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item F, deliberate and act on a location release for the Hill and the Hole feature film. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protim, Commission, I am happy to announce that Wright Rectangles Film Incorporated will be filming a feature film in Raton. It's entitled The Hill and the Hole, and filming will take place in Raton primarily on Saturday, July 29th. They will be filming in some downtown areas, some street shots in the downtown area, and they have a document in the packet here for you called a location release for The Hill and the Hole feature film. The location, they, the location release states that they have the full right and authority to film and use the film and distribute and broadcast the product of their filming efforts. They have given us their certificate of insurance, and I think we're set to go. They're not really asking for any street closures or any interruption to traffic. They just, so I don't know a lot of information besides on what's going to happen besides it's going to take place Saturday morning. So we are asking for the commission's consideration of the location release and approval granted to Wright Rectangles Film for their plans to film.
Make a motion to, that effect?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the location release for The Hill and the Hole feature film. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, public hearing ordinance number 995, changes to the City of Raton Animal Ordinance Section 9, Chapter 90. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protim and Commission, at the last meeting, we did have a presentation from Ms. Fernandez regarding a draft of proposed changes to the animal control ordinance. She did detail for the commission that there were significant changes proposed in the ordinance. We will continue to have additional chances for the public to provide their input to the commission prior to setting this up for action by the commission. But tonight, we did want to provide the opportunity to the public to address the proposed changes. If there's anyone in attendance here that would like to stand up and address the commission on proposed changes, I would remind people who may be listening that they could write their comments and send in written comments. They can send those by email, they can call us on the phone and provide their comments. So there are a variety of ways that people can comment. I would also state that the draft of the proposed ordinance is on the city website. I would encourage anybody that is concerned with the animal patrol ordinance, has pets, has large livestock, please thoroughly read the ordinance and understand the ordinance, ask any questions that may come up, and of course, people are welcome to provide their input.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address this ordinance at this time? Okay, this is a public hearing. I believe, Mr. Berry, would you take an action next meeting or the following?
I believe that we would be set up to take action at the second meeting in August. I don't know the date offhand, but it would be the fourth Tuesday in August. Does that sound correct?
22nd.
August 22nd. So we'll talk about it at the first August meeting. Also, we'll have a public hearing and an opportunity for input at the August 22nd commission meeting, and it will be on the agenda for action by the commission at the August 22nd meeting.
Thank you. All right, also in the same line, public hearing for the City of Raton Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, the infrastructure capital improvement plan is a requirement from our New Mexico Department of Finance Administration to all municipalities to express our priorities for funding capital improvements, not only over the next year, but over the next five years. An important element of establishing that plan, again, is getting input from the public. We welcome the public to attend and tell the commission what the priorities ought to be as far as improvements to our capital infrastructure. We have a limited opportunity to do this. We, again, would be taking action, I believe we would take action at the first August meeting, that's the second Tuesday in August, to establish the ICIP because we have a date shortly after that that we have to submit the ICIP to DFA. So we have limited dollars and limited funding opportunities for capital improvements, and we have a lot of things to improve in the community, and that's where it's important that we establish our priorities and really focus on funding and improving those top priorities and then moving other things up onto the list. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is really to encourage the public, again, to provide their input, either in some written form, a phone call, or they'll have that opportunity at a commission meeting. Now, for your review, we'll review some of the top priorities over the past year, and I'll give you some of the recommendations of the staff, but we do want to elicit that public input. So looking at last year, the top priority has been street improvements and street reconstruction. And we have received some capital outlay for street construction. I'll talk about the project that we're getting ready to start funded by capital outlay under the city manager's report, but that has been a top priority in past years, and you can decide, and the public can decide if street improvements are still that top priority. And then we further have to decide which streets and what's the priority on which streets to improve. And we've talked about that many times, that most streets in Raton could use some level of effort, and some of those are full construction. We can only do a portion every year of the street funding that we need, so we really need to prioritize what those are. And sometimes that priority depends on the funding source, so we try to take the money that we have, the gas tax, and leverage that with other funds and stretch our dollars. And so that's definitely a priority, and you can drive around a lot of city streets, and it's evident. And that's true, I think, of a lot of municipalities, especially in New Mexico, where gasoline tax, it's typically looked at as a user fee, the gasoline tax, and we are much lower in New Mexico than other states. That means that we have much fewer dollars to work on, not only local streets, but also our state highways. So we offer that as a top priority, and my recommendation would be that would remain a top priority in the upcoming year. From last year's list, we looked at Lake Malloy Dam safety improvements, and again, I would recommend that that would stay as our second highest priority. We have a number of issues in Malloy that we have talked about. I think that it is a priority for the New Mexico Legislature and the New Mexico State Engineer as well. And we've had discussions with State Engineer Office and the Dam Safety Bureau, and they have verified that Malloy is, is one of their priorities in the state of New Mexico. We currently are working with the Dam Safety Bureau, as Commissioner had said, as far as an evaluation of the service spillway. Service spillway is a concrete chute that is on the face of the embankment. Some of the areas at the crest of the dam are concrete that was placed there in between 1946 and 1948, so that's concrete that has a lot of age to it. We're seeing some seepage at that area. We're doing the evaluation, but the likely outcome of that would be to remove and replace that crest section, and that is a very challenging project. We've talked about spillway capacity and outlet works also previously. So in total, there is quite a bit of work that we would like to do at Malloy and a lot of dollars. And so we're progressing along with some of that, and certainly we'll go back to the legislature and ask them to consider Lake Malloy and express it as a high priority as well. Going down the list, we listed patrol car replacement in the Police Department. I think that we would like to pursue a plan to finance a replacement of a couple of patrol cars using law enforcement protection funds, so we may try to slide that down a little bit. We talked about equipment with City Public Works. We are, we really have an issue with some of our equipment in the city as far as doing some of the maintenance work, really has got some age and some high hours on it, and that results in a lot of maintenance costs and some downtime. So we would look at trying to replace some of that equipment as we go. I think that, that item would probably be our number three priority. Raton Main Street Great Blocks, that's a downtown revitalization economic development project that the City of Raton and a lot of our community partners have put an extensive amount of time into. We have some of the funding in place, as we talked about. We have about 40% of the project funding in place. We are seeking additional funding through some grant opportunities with the U.S. Department of Commerce. So I think we want to have that in there somewhere, but I think we may have an avenue to fund that, and capital outlay through the legislature may not be a good place to go looking for that money. So we may shift that around as well. And that's what we showed is the top five priorities. And then you can see there are pages and pages of additional priorities listed. Can I hold up there?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Berry?
You did say this list is on the internet where the people could look at it.
We, we would like to just, to get input to people. I think that this is available. I'll ensure that it's available on our website so that it's easy to view, and people can provide their input on that. So I think it's there, but we'll make sure that it's easily available to the public.
And once again, this is a public hearing for our ICIP. If there's anyone in the public out there in the audience that would like to address this at this time, we will entertain. Any thoughts, comments? All righty. Item I, deliberate and act on Resolution Number RWW 2017-2, Budget Adjustment Number One, Fiscal Year Seventeen.
Mayor Protim and Commission, I've provided you with a corrected copy. As I was working on reports today, I realized that my transfers were out of balance, so under the general fund, you'll see that I've removed two lines that were pertaining to, I think it was the insurance reserve, and so I took those two lines out because they weren't necessary.
Let me hold you up there, Mike Lan.
Yes.
We're on the Raton Water Works.
Oh, we're doing Water Works. Okay. So yes, you do have a copy.
Where am I on the whack?
What's that?
RWW 2017-2.
Yeah, we do have a copy. Raton Water Works has provided us with their budget adjustment, and it's Resolution 2017-2.
Yep.
So they've provided a summary of the adjustments that they'll be making for fiscal year-end, and I've reviewed it and would recommend, it's been approved by their board.
Has been approved by their board.
Would recommend approval by the City Commission this evening.
Mayor Protim, Mr. Campbell is on hand if you have any particular questions about the adjustments.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell? We did approve this at the last, we did at board meeting.
I'll move to approve Raton, or City of Raton Water Board Utility Commission Resolution Number RWW 2017-2, Budget Adjustment, Resolution Number One.
I'll second. Oh, a motion and a second to approve Resolution RWW 2017-2, Budget Adjustment. Mike Lan, can we take a roll call, a roll time down, please?
Sure. Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim. Sagata?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Item J, now we can go on to deliberate and act on Resolution 2017-35, Approval of the Final End-of-Year Budget Adjustments. Mike Lan.
Okay, sorry about the, as I was saying, I've provided you with the corrected copy, and the only correction I made was under the transfers to the general fund. You will see that we've adjusted the transfers in from the depot project, which we've repaid the general fund $343.42, $3,434.28. So that's been repaid to the general fund, and then at year-end, we did have two grants, the juvenile justice and the airport grant that were outstanding at year-end, and so we've made temporary transfers to those funds until we receive those grant reimbursements. And those will be rebudgeted in the new fiscal year as a repayment to the general fund. Other than that, we're just making some line item adjustments, and then I did provide a little bit more of a narrative under some of the transfers on your corrected copy that explained that we were doing it to cover those expenses until the grant reimbursements were received. Other than that, it's just our standard year-end close and kind of clean things up. It's a pretty short end of year adjustment, actually, but that is because it's number 16, so we've been doing these all along, all year, so. So we've been doing these all along all year, so.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2017-35, approval of the final end-year budget.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2017-35, approval of the final year-end budget. Is there any further discussion or questions? Mike Lan, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sagada?
Yes.
Item K, deliberate and act on resolution 2017-36, approval of the fourth quarter June 30th, 2017 financial report, Mike Lan.
Mayor Protim and Commissioner, I've also given you a corrected copy of the financial report. On the top page of the report, the only thing that changed is we were off 20 cents in one of our debt service funds, and it was just a misposting of interest. So that's been corrected, and everything's in balance. So the ending balances just changed by 20 cents. So the other thing that I did update was on the subsequent pages, the budget adjustment that we did tonight. I hadn't quite finished updating all of the columns to reflect those budget adjustments. So I've run all of my reports, and I'm working on the DFA reports, and I've had a chance to double-check and triple-check everything, and everything's in balance. And so I've provided you the corrected report to reflect that. But I did just want to mention that our July gross receipts that we received, this being the new fiscal year, we are, for the month of July, showing a 2.5% increase. And that's just per what we budgeted. So I just want to remind you that we did budget a 3% decrease in our GRT this year. So probably from now until October, November, we'll start seeing some of the GRT coming in from active construction projects. And then we'll kind of start to see that taper off probably in December. But we'll be tracking that percentage because we always like to enter the winter in a positive. So hopefully, the gross receipts over the next few months will continue to show that increase. For the fiscal year, we did end our general fund ending cash balance was just a little over 1.6 million, and our available cash after our 112th reserve was a little over 1.3 million. So we did overall exceed our budget projections. We also did have some shortfalls throughout the year in various categories. But overall, we had other revenues that helped compensate for that, so, which was also offset by an increase in our Colfax County dispatch agreement and ambulance services. So as I stated, all the temporary transfers that needed to be made back to the general fund have been made, with the exception of the airport project. That reimbursement wasn't received till about a week ago. So other than that, I think I had a juvenile justice and a GO bond, which were smaller amounts than the airport. But other than that, we'll have all of our reports submitted to DFA by the July 31st deadline. And once I get the DFA report done, I'll make you a copy, just so that you have that.
Very good. Are there any questions from Mike Lan?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2017-36 of the financial report.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2017-36, approval of the fourth quarter June 30th, 2017 financial report. Any further discussion? Mike Lan, can we have a roll call one more time, please?
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sagada?
Yes.
Item L, deliberate and act on resolution 2017-37, approval of the final 2018 budget. This also encompasses the City of Raton with Raton Public Service and Raton Water Works. Antonucci or Mr. Berry, either one?
I'm going to defer to Mrs. Antonucci.
Mayor Protim and Commissioner, I apologize, we've given you a lot of paper. You do have copies of the city's budget, Raton Public Service, and also Raton Water Works. Normally, we probably, I've included them all under one resolution, but we've listed them separately. So I mean, we could certainly approve them as one or individually, but we could review them individually.
I don't think any, no, I would be in favor of approving them all as one budget. It's the City of Raton.
On the city's budget, I just wanted to point out, I did give you a summary of the budget changes that were made. So hopefully, you've had a chance to look that over. The majority of the budget changes, the big thing is once we close out the fiscal year and we finalize our ending cash balances, then those roll forward and become our beginning cash balances as of July 1. So a lot of the adjustments and changes I make are a result of adjustments per those ending cash balances. Other than that, I don't think there was anything major that I wanted to highlight, other than the temporary transfers that we had at the year end are rebudgeted for this fiscal year and will be paid back in this fiscal year. And then I did have a few adjustments related to insurance, because we did receive our insurance statements from the Mexico Self Insurance Fund. So I was able to make those adjustments to reflect the actual amount that was billed for the year. We also got a few grants that were awarded after we approved the interim. So I've updated the budget to reflect your MAP, your co-op street projects, the USDA grant for the community kitchen. So, you know, I make a good faith effort to try and capture anything and everything that I can for the fiscal year. But as we know, it is a living document, and as things come up, once it's approved this evening, then the only way it can be amended would be through budget adjustments. So this budget must be submitted by July 31st, and then we normally would receive the final approval by September 1st.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike Lan or Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2017-31, approval of the final FY 2018 budget.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2017-37, approval of the final fiscal year 2018 budget. Any further discussion? Glenn, one more roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sagada?
Yes. Motion passes, and I'd like to commend the staff on that for a job well done.
Mayor Protim, I would like to mention the efforts of our city treasurer. There's a lot of work here, and it's become a lengthy process. And there are a number of deadlines that are set forth by us, and a lot of effort and a lot of extra time on Mike Lan's part to get this together, meet those deadlines, and deal with all the dynamics that she mentioned with the living document. So I think you all see the effort. It's, I love the professionals who we have in the office. We're fortunate to have that professional ability.
Absolutely. And this also while the audit's getting underway, too, right?
That's correct. Audits and a number of things that you never really get a breather.
Right.
In fact, I'm always in there telling her, what about July 31st, that deadline, and she's met it, so.
Absolutely. Job well done.
Thank you. Very good.
Item M, deliberate and act on a lease agreement between the City of Raton and Amtrak, Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, in regard to the rail depot, you will remember some time ago, I believe in November, we did have a conveyance agreement and a lease agreement that was drafted between Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad and the City of Raton. And the Commission did approve that. And the primary matter there is BNSF had agreed to give the depot to the City of Raton for the purpose of renovation of the building and under the provision that railway operations would continue. That's the purpose of the depot. Also, we talked about BNSF would continue to operate, signal department operations and telecommunications department operations in the building. And those documents required the concurrence of Amtrak and a lease agreement between the City of Raton and Amtrak. So we have worked with Amtrak from that time until now to obtain that concurrence. And what you have is a lease agreement with, between the City of Raton and the National Railroad Passenger Corporation, commonly known as Amtrak. And we will also consider a deed of easement from the City of Raton to the National Railroad Passenger Corporation. You have those two documents in front of you. Primarily, that states that Amtrak would operate passenger rail on the premises, use the premises for that purpose. There is not money changing hands in these transactions. And it acknowledges that the City of Raton would have an obligation to support passenger rail operations. And of course, I think that's one of the reasons that we would get involved in the building, is we have approximately 15,000 people a year get on and off the train in Raton. It's a busy area, and we would like to see improvements to that facility that are more accommodating, inviting to those passengers, and give a better picture of Raton. So I think we would definitely support those passenger rail operations. And I'll answer any questions that you have on the lease agreement. But that's the issue that we have. I think if we can execute this along with the BNSF documents, we can proceed along with that project.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
No, but thank you for working hard on this. I know this has taken a lot of time as well.
Absolutely.
I could tell you that I think everyone recognizes that renovation of the facility probably can only be done by the active participation of the City of Raton and the City of Raton stepping up. I think Amtrak and other parties are very favorable to that, but that does not translate into very rapid action. And so pulling this together with all the different parts of Amtrak and BNSF is, has been a challenge.
I just thought, I found one spot where it said they should cause utilities' payphones in common areas be supplied. Do they even make payphones still?
I do not think so.
So I just thought that was interesting. But it is an agreement.
The last time we were in there was, there was one there that was inoperable.
Right.
There was one in the, in the right corner that when we were down there.
And you know what is more common and probably would not be difficult to install, is the charging stations.
Charging stations, yes. For cellphones. I think it's a pretty good agreement. Talked with Mr. Berry about it, and appreciate all the hard work. So we'll entertain a motion.
Can we incorporate M and N in this one?
It was going that direction, Commissioner Chavis.
All right, thank you, sir.
Since they are like items, they go hand-in-hand, I would entertain a motion to.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Approve both.
I'll make that motion to approve lease agreement between the City of Raton and Amtrak, also a deed of easement between the City of Raton and National Railroad Passenger Corporation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement between the City of Raton and Amtrak along with a deed of easement between Raton and the National Railroad Passenger Corporation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Item O, deliberate and act on bid award for taxiway A rehabilitation, NMAD grant RTN 1702, Mr. Berry.
Mayor Protim and Commissioner, we have opened bids for the construction of taxiway A rehabilitation. That is funded under a funding agreement that includes federal aviation. They would fund 90% of the project, 5% state aviation, and 5% City of Raton. On this upcoming Thursday, we will open bids for the construction of taxiway Delta. And based on the dynamic with reviewing the bid received on taxiway A rehabilitation, and we're interested to see how the result of the taxiway Delta request for bids come in, it's my recommendation that we postpone action on the bid award for taxiway Alpha until the August 8th meeting, where we will consider a ward of bids for both projects.
I agree with that.
You need a motion to postpone, I'll move to postpone action on award of taxiway A rehabilitation NMAD grant, RTN-17-02.
Second. We have a motion and a second to postpone action on resolution 2613 until August 22nd. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Did you say the 8th or the 22nd?
The 8th, we were planning.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 8th.
Coming back to the Commission.
I'm sorry. Everything else was going 22nd, that's awful. Okay. Item P, deliberate and act on resolution 2016-38, acceptance of NMDOT SP-4-1 Cooperative Agreement and Pledge of Matching Funds.
Here's a little slight typo on that one, it should be SP-4-18, 908.
Okay. Duly noted. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protim and Commissioner, in your packets, you have the local government road fund cooperative agreement, grant agreement, and then you were given resolution 2017-38. And what these documents state is that the City of Raton has been awarded a grant from the New Mexico Department of Transportation, and the total project cost would be $44,815 to be funded in proportion of share by the New Mexico Department of Transportation, 75% share. That would be limited to $33,611. City of Raton, and what you would do by execution of this resolution is you would resolve that you would provide a matching share of 25%. That's the amount of $11,204. And then ultimately, if we construct a project and it exceeds $44,815, the City of Raton would pay all of the excess amount. What we have said at the time of application back last March is that we would look at resurfacing of Galistayo Avenue and Apache Avenue, and we would propose to use the chip seal method to do that resurfacing. Chip seal has been an effective method of resurfacing some of our very old streets that have a sound base, good drainage, but a very oxidized, deteriorated pavement surface. So we would recommend that for Galistayo and Apache Avenue. It fits with the dollars that we have here. And we would ask for the Commission's approval of resolution 2017-38. By the way, the matching, source of matching funds would be the gasoline tax.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2017-38.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution 2017-38. Is there any further discussion?
I would just point out to the Commission that upon this resolution and execution of the resolution and the grant agreement, we would return this to DOT. We would probably not see executed grant agreements come back to us for a period of six weeks or maybe six weeks or maybe greater. When we have that, we would go through a process that would include environmental assessment of a project, and in likelihood, we would not see construction on the project until the summer of 2018.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Item Q, deliberate enact on Resolution 2017-39, our MAP agreements. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protim, in commission, the City of Raton back in March did apply this million application for municipal arterial program funding through New Mexico Department of Transportation. On your agenda, Q, you can scratch cooperative agreement there. It is a municipal arterial program. And similar to the previous item, we do have a resolution that says that we would provide our share of the funding. In this case, the total project cost would be $200,000 with $150,000 provided by the New Mexico Department of Transportation. The City of Raton commits to $50,000 for the project. Back in March, we did talk about reconstruction of Hospital Drive as a priority for this MAP application, so we would proceed along with engineering design of Hospital Drive. Again, similar schedule, we would look at construction in the summer of 2018. There is a process, again, the environmental assessment would come in. We'll wait for a period until we get signed contracts back from DOT, so we would back into that probably June 1st, 2018 construction date. Now, I would state that part of the scope of work would be resurfacing that part of Hospital Drive that needs that, but the area that we affectionately call the dip, which is at the old 555 alignment, that area would be removed and regraded so that we maintain the surface drainage pattern that's there, but we effectively eliminate the dip. That would be in the intersection of Card Avenue currently, and there will be traffic control issues when that work is done. So we'll have a challenge in maintaining access to those area businesses, to the hospital. There is a heavy traffic load in that, and perform this work. So we'll report back to the commission when we get closer, but that is a challenge with this project.
Any further questions for Mr. Berry? Would you entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve Resolution 2017-39, acceptance of NMDOT MAP 7607920, municipal arterial program cooperative agreement.
Scratch the co-op agreement.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. And pledge of matching funds.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2017-39. Michael, can we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sagata?
True. And item R, city manager's report. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protim, in commission, I would report to the commission that currently, one of our high priorities for public works crew is preparation for the chip seal project. The chip seal project is scheduled to start the week of August 7th. It is funded by capital outlay from the legislature in the amount of $150,000. We will be resurfacing portions of Bora Avenue, Pecos Avenue, South Fourth Street, Wyer Avenue, One Avista Street, and Sugar Reed Avenue. And in the case of all of those, we will not be resurfacing the entire street, but we will be resurfacing portions of that. What our responsibility is prior to that August 7th date is to do any patching or repairs on the asphalt surface that's existing, sweep and clean the street so that it's free of dirt or debris. So we've got some work to do. Our crews have been out in recent days and recent weeks working on those streets. We've got a limited time, so we'll put a lot of effort into that until we start the August 7th date. We are stockpiling the aggregate for this, commonly called chips, at the Little League Field. That's in the vicinity of some of the streets that we're working on, so we're getting those, that material in place. We are procuring this under three state procurement contracts, one for the aggregate, one for the asphalt demolition, and then one for the work. The work will take, will be completed in about a one-week period, so we'll report back to you on the, at the August 8th meeting. We have a contractor working today at the National Guard Armory located at the airport, also called the DOS Flight School. There was an indoor shooting range in the building, and we have asked the National Guard Armory, the, excuse me, the National Guard to donate the building to the City of Raton for the use as a flight school. They have said that they need to go through an environmental clearance process, and lead contamination of that shooting range has been an issue since we filed our request. So the National Guard has cleaned the room twice and then got test results that were not adequate to them to release the building. So hopefully, third time's a charm. The crew is out there working the last two days. They'll finish up that work tomorrow. They'll retest the building, then they will encapsulate that room, and then we should be in good shape for them to transfer ownership of the building to the City of Raton. Meanwhile, flight school operations are ongoing at the building. So I'll report back to you on the results of the lead remediation. Starting tomorrow and for the next two days, we will have the New Mexico Tree Survey in Raton, and we will provide help. I have asked, actually asked Spark, the community group, to help us with the tree survey. It will be largely an effort of data implementation on urban trees, urban forestation, should take place over the next couple of days. We have a contractor back starting Friday at the multimodal center. They will be replacing trees and vegetation that did not survive the winter. And so we have a number of trees and some shrubs and other plants that they will be replacing. We'll do that work over a couple of days. That is warranty work. That's not work that we're paying additional for. That's work that they are obligated to do. I did attend the Raton School Board meeting, this past meeting, along with Chief Garcia. We did discuss the memorandum of understanding regarding the school resource officer, the same agreement that the commission had considered at the last meeting. The school board did vote unanimously to approve that MOU, so we are now in line to proceed along with placing that school resource officer in the school this fall, and I think that's a good, good thing for all parties. Lastly, Mayor Protim, we will have auditors present doing fieldwork starting next Monday. They will be here for several days throughout the week, primarily be working at Raton Public Service Company doing fieldwork. And that's all I have, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. That concludes the manager's report. Commissioner Schuster, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
I do not, thank you.
Commissioner Jacomo?
I do not.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes. It was a great weekend for Raton with the motorcycle rally and the run to Raton car show. I think that it drew this out to those people because it brought a lot of people here. And so it was a good, it was a real good weekend for the City of Raton. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell and I had the pleasure of going to the resolutions committee meeting a couple of hours ago. There was a resolution that we passed involving taxation and stuff, and there was a quote put in there by our governor, basically telling, why should I give municipalities any more money when it would hurt the general fund? More or less, Dan, is that correct? That just shows me how much Santa Fe cares about our communities. They'd rather see money in their pockets than our own, so I was very saddened by that. But that's all I have. Seeing no other business, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.